Hey Sumner, so I did locate your name in the minutes. Your name is in the minutes, so if you could just bring that up as an edit.
Yeah.
We just want you here all the time.
And I think it said I seconded.
I only see one. It just says that you're present.
Present. It didn't say that I seconded the minutes?
I don't see another mention of my name unless it was spelled.
Motion to seat alternate.
Oh, motion to seat alternate. There, I know I saw it a second time ago.
Is it spelled differently there? Oh, it's your, it's your last name. I only searched for your first name.
I don't know. I don't know how to spell my name. Oh.
So yes, just perhaps mention as the edit to strike all mentions of Sumner and go back and figure out who actually seconded it.
Do we ever find out why some of the mayors with the dates up to them say INC isn't incorporated out there? No. Nope.
Incomplete term? I don't know.
It looks like incorporated, but I can't see on that.
Maybe mayors used to be.
It could be incumbent.
Ah, there you go.
Should mean like the runner up, right?
No, it would mean that they were reelected, I guess.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Was it more than one term?
Which is, I mean, for Glenwood, they're selected by the rest of the council.
Right.
So it's kind of an.
Are we gonna? What are you gonna consider electing a mayor?
We have, we represent Silverthorne, which has that. You know, it's a different dynamic. The mayor really is just someone to run a meeting. Great guys. Yeah, yeah, there's lots of different models.
Yeah.
Waller's had it now. Well.
Uh, I think Ben's here. Ben is here, which is six o'clock, so I will remind them of their duties.
He's a vegetarian. So.
Who mentioned yours?
They're going pretty crazy.
Oh, that's right.
Good. How are you?
Alright. I was, I still don't have.
Why in New Mexico and back easy?
I still don't have a computer.
Yeah.
When you can, I can't. I don't have.
Like two weeks ago.
Oh, so you didn't have the 24 hours.
So you just can't get into civic clerk or test.
I can't log on. I'm on civic clerk, but I can't log in. And getting testing wasn't hard.
Super easy. Everywhere.
You go to the computer.
George, can you go to the front facing section?
To the what?
The front facing section. COGS. Like, yeah, we just.
Could you bring your own Anethin test with you?
Like if you.
My daughter. With my daughter, they just like put it in her mouth.
Think if you just, yep, and then go to, right, uh, scroll down to.
No, you don't have to.
Can see.
They're also coming back.
And you should, it's not what you're used to, but.
Okay, right.
But it'll work in a pinch?
It'll worth like 40 bucks to come here and play.
Maybe she got locked out the way that Carolyn got locked out.
Yeah, that happened to me a few months ago. But I don't have my computers, I can't.
So when you go through the show.
Like email with a QR code.
Alright. Time being about 6:02, I called to order the city Glenwood Springs Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. It is the last meeting of the year. It's December 14th, 2021. And let's see, we have some attendance instructions. I think this is a hybrid. Is it still a hybrid?
It's still a hybrid.
It's a hybrid. So we are here at City Hall, but it is also available via Zoom. And the webinar address is 848-982, excuse me, 76149. Usually they give me a phone number to mention, but I don't see one today, so if you want to call in. Usually it's an 800 number listed that I don't have today, sorry.
Uh, it's.
It's okay.
I can get it for you here.
Yeah, we'll add that later. And I'm looking around and we don't have any ultimate sitting up front, so I am asking Hannah to do a roll call, or Jen to do the roll call, please.
Commissioner Jen.
Here.
Commissioner Schacter.
Here.
Commissioner Shaver.
Here.
Commissioner Zipperly.
Here.
Commissioner Wissing. Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner White. Commissioner Waller. Commissioner Connerton. You.
All good, thank you. Um, moving on to item number three tonight, and that would be, as always, to receive the minutes, and this is from the November 16th. Meeting. Yeah. Is there no? There's some discrepancies, but let's do this. I'm entertaining a motion to receive those minutes and then we'll discuss.
So.
Thank you. And a second, any discussion on the minutes?
Uh, yes, um, I will have my name removed from minutes and in the two, any instance since I wasn't here. And I was present at the roll call.
I think you might have gotten mixed up there, George and Sumner.
Yes.
And Marco, just for clarity, when we're listening back to the minutes, if you could restate who motioned and who seconded? That would be extremely helpful to staff.
From now on out, that you want me to do with this one?
From now on out would be great.
I'll do it with this one. We had a motion.
Perfect.
From Commissioner Zipperly and a second Commissioner Shaver to approve the, or receive, I should say, the minutes. And we, we switched some names from absent to present, and that was Sumner Schacter was moved into the absent column, and George Shaver was moved into the present column. Any other discussion in the minutes?
I believe it might have been Commissioner Shaver who seconded the motion to seat the alternate. To my recollection.
Oh, as for in, in, in the minutes, yeah, I think you, you might be right. I don't know. That's, that's a vague thing.
Yes, I believe that happens when we go back and listen. We can't necessarily identify who is saying it, so I think that was a, a guess, and so where Sumner is mentioned, I believe it actually means George.
Okay.
And staff will make sure that gets corrected.
Okay. That sounds good. So if there is, and do we have, we still don't have, we're not on TV or voting, it's all, it's.
Yes, not yet.
Not yet, okay. So then what we'll do is by a voice vote, all a favor to receive the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
And those votes, you see none, that was just the three of us. No, Wes was here.
No.
No, Wes was here. Just the three of us, okay. Motion cares, in case anybody cares. We seem to have some technical difficulties to the left of me here, so we're gonna give it a second. Since I have it, yeah, we can.
It's, it's not even going to the, well. We could move you down.
You wanna move down?
This one, do you want to move down?
Alright, excellent. That was the minutes. Moving on to item number four tonight, comments from citizens appearing for items not on the agenda. Anybody's here for that, please come forward. See none. We'll move on to our first continued item for tonight, and that is identified A. Which is a consideration of a coatex amendment to municipal code Title 070. And I think Hannah is ready to. Tell us something.
I think we have a.
If you'll indulge me, I think that you have a participant who is in the attendees who could potentially be Amy Connerton who's got her hand raised.
It is, yes.
So I don't think that at this point we're on a hybrid where we have been having people who are not in the room. Is that, I mean, participate as a voting.
Well, because council is.
Considering.
Considering that change to electronic participation, but there's nothing.
She might be calling right now.
Right.
Right, I think, I, did they, did they vote on first?
Hi, I don't know if you guys can hear me, but yes, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that you couldn't call in, so I totally apologize. I'm stuck in Edwards.
Sounds good. Thanks for letting us know.
Yeah, I can see you guys well on my big giant screen.
Let's say give it a month.
Yeah, I think we.
We're just not quite set up with, with the code change and probably any standards that need to be adopted.
I, I know that we're gonna talk about the two times a year or four times a year, whatever, but I don't know if it went through or not.
I think they, I think they voted on first.
Yeah, and I believe.
Or no, did they, did they table it?
I don't know what happened.
I think it was on the agenda and maybe they didn't actually take it up.
Okay.
So we just, let, let us circle back to that and.
Yeah, because I, I mean, for our towns that have been doing this, we've had like rules we need to follow.
Right.
For the hybrid meeting, and we don't have this in front of us.
We have, we don't have the rules, so.
Yeah.
Amy, thanks for checking in, but enjoy your evening, all. I guess that's.
You can watch.
Yeah, I can, I, I'll probably watch. I, I'm sorry, I apologize. It's just the canyon, they're doing rock mitigation, and so I'm working over in Edwards, so, um.
And Amy, I apologize, this is Hannah. I, I do see your message at five o'clock today, asking if that was okay, so I missed that message, so you can blame me.
It's all good. Again, thanks for calling in, enjoyed the show, and we'll see you next week, okay?
Yeah, you guys all look great.
Awesome, thank you. Alright, so now that's settled, so Hannah, back to you. Item 58, continue.
Yes, sorry, I was trying to lower her hand, but.
Thank you.
Uh, great, yes. So this is a consideration of text amendments to section, Title 70, Section 703030 of our use-specific standards specifically for wireless communication facilities. Some of you will remember the last time we updated these regulations as well. I'm looking at you, Marco. And I'm gonna give like the brief background, and the majority of this is actually going to be taken over by Richard. Because this, as you saw in the staff report, we have a memo from Carp New Hanlon outlining what's happening here, why the city is updating. So we do have use-specific standards in our code for wireless communication facilities, and state and federal regulations have changed or are changing, and so this is the city updating our standards to match better with those. And the proposed amendments incorporate changes with definitions and colocation requirements, locating within the right-of-way, visual and aesthetic impact, maximum height of the actual alternative tower structures. And I do have an image that I can show you, if you're wondering what these actually look like, facility distance standards, submittal requirements, and review procedures on behalf of the city that we have timeline lies to process these types of applications. Uh, so for code amendments, Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommending body to city council, so we have criteria for code amendment application. Staff has provided that in the staff report. Basically consistency with the comprehensive plan and city policies, not conflicting with other provisions of the code, necessary to address a demonstrated community need, which is in reference to the state and federal regulation changes. Necessary to respond to substantial changes again, and is consistent with the general purpose and intent of this code. Staff finds the proposed changes are consistent with that criteria and recommending approval of the code changes with suggested findings in your staff report. And with that, I will turn it over to Richard for some of the finer nuances of the actual text change.
Thank you, Hannah.
Alright, good evening. So as Hannah mentioned, the city adopted pretty early on some wireless communication facility regulations in 2018, kind of addressing what people knew was coming in the door, but didn't know exactly what they were gonna look like. This is basically the deployment of the 5G network, which, when you go to Denver or other large cities, you might start seeing 5G showing up on your phone and notice that it's really, really fast. The reason it is so fast is because there's a lot of different, a lot of towers in a small area, and that's kind of the, the focus of how this is being deployed. And in order to get the network built. Quickly and in a way that actually creates a network, the wireless industry enlisted the federal and state governments to basically preempt a lot of local regulation. Preemption is basically says, if your regulations interfere with the federal standards, then your regulations have to follow it. There's been some court cases on this, the kind of the national city municipal organizations have been challenging them. Most of those challenges have failed. The one area where city local regulations have been upheld is in the area of aesthetics. And making sure that these things aren't super ugly. That was one of the big concerns. And so with that and with some other changes in the law and state and federal law, a lot of changes from the Federal Communications Commission. We've kind of been going through this code and some, some other codes and seeing what updates need to, need to happen. Some definitions have changed in the federal law. Some of the standards have changed in state law, and so what's before you, you know, is basically an attempt to incorporate that and then learn from some of the recent applications that the city has received. To ensure that the process in the code is fair to the applicants, but also protects the city's, city's rights. And where this really, where the rubber hits the road on this is, at least at this point for the city, is the applications for these, for these towers or alternative towers in the right-of-way. They, they have to be approved if they meet your standards. It's not a lot of discretion there. And so we have to make sure that those standards really are up to, up to snuff, and that they protect the city's public infrastructure that's in the right-of-way. And these applications also have to be processed, the ones in the right-of-way on a, they call it shot clock. So there are either 45, 60, or 90 days, depending on what, what the application is for. And so we, you know, kind of went back through and made sure that our process includes opportunities for, for the wireless industry to submit all the required applications. But then also opportunities for us to, to pause the process where it makes sense, so that we staff have more time to, to review these applications, because that, that shot clock window goes by very quickly. So, uh, some of the highlights, I think Hannah did a good job of kind of running through those, requiring colocation in the right-of-way especially. Is, is really important for the city where our infrastructure can support these, these structures. We want them to be located. Collocated there, basically to reduce additional impacts in the right-of-way. Trying to get, she mentioned lowering the heights in the right-of-way from 35 to 25 feet. That's the vast majority of applications would have to come in at 25 feet now, but we did include a relief, kind of a release valve. If, if the company can show that to be technically feasible, they need to either raise the height of the tower or have them closer together, because this is, this is one of the areas where there's a bit of a balancing point is if you have higher towers, then they could be further apart, but if you have lower towers, they need to be pushed together. And the state, where the preemption piece comes in with federal laws, you can't do anything that unreasonably interferes with the deployment of the network, so. We gotta make sure that there's, there's some release valve that we can. Make sure that the, the city's implementation of the code is not running foul. And then the last thing is kind of trying to reduce the, the pressure on staff of having, you know, potentially dozens of different applications coming in at different times. Trying to encourage applicants to submit kind of batch applications and also entering into master license agreements that would kind of hopefully take these out of, of the shot clock realm and work with a company to say, here's where we think this makes sense, and let's work through this process more cooperatively instead of in a traditional like application review process, because it is, it is the city's property, and you know, it's really the city's interest to make sure that, that these are deployed where, where the staff and city think that they should be. The other side of this that we have not seen much of is private deployment, and that's really where, and that's just some private property. You know, I think we'll start seeing some of these on apartment buildings. Have we gotten any of those applications for, that you've seen?
I think that we've had a couple of replacement projects that may have used a newer technology, but I don't think that we've had anything that's new on a private. I, I think there have been conversations, but I don't think that there's been anything that's actually deployed that's not like a replacement of something.
And that, that really is kind of the zoning and land use piece of it, is making sure that aesthetically, these things aren't super ugly, even when deployed on people's private property. Because the wireless industry is probably willing to pay a bunch of money to put these things on, on buildings, and the city needs to kind of get ahead of that and make sure that. Yeah, the stuff doesn't, doesn't look like people's worst nightmares. So, did you put the picture up yet? This is from Denver's website. This is kind of, at least for towers in the right-of-way, this is called my alternative tower structure. This is the design we're seeing a lot of. You know, they, the federal law has come in with very specific size requirements. We cannot go beneath for the kind of the, the wiring and the antenna structure that's in there. There's a lot of stuff in that, in that hole, so this is kind of the compliant structure that we're seeing a lot of what's coming in, so. Expect, expect more of it. So, yeah, that's, that's kind of it for me. If you all have any questions.
Awesome, thank you, Richard. Let's use the buttons, so try to. Thank you, but I'll figure it out. Commissioner Zipperly?
I was wondering if there's the potential for any interference between these wireless towers and other wireless things like radio or.
My understanding is the FCC has reserved this spectrum, this 5G spectrum, and not allowed anything. People to use anything like around it in those radio frequencies for that exact reason. I think that our regulations also require kind of a certification letter that there won't be any interference with other radio.
Is this technology at all dangerous to people? Like, I know that being near some types of transmitters is, is against the rules in some instances, like for a low-power FX station, they're really careful about how many feet people are limit from these. Are there any clearance requirements like that, please?
Um, my, I'm not an expert on, on the health, any health impacts. I do know that federal case law said you cannot consider health impacts from wireless devices in. Is this, in this realm, so, yeah, it's.
Great.
It is, I, I think that the, the court basically said, you know, we've looked at the evidence, there's no impacts. That's kind of what the FCC says, and that's.
Gonna have to trust him on this.
That's where it ends for, where my attorney had.
Awesome, thank you, Commissioner Schact.
Thank you, Richard. My eyes kind of glossed over and.
Sorry about that.
All. But I understand, and I had a question, and I wrote down, and then you mentioned it, this does not address regulations on private property?
It does, it does.
Does it overlap?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, we, the, the right-of-way piece is the kind of more important piece at this point. But we still felt it was important to put it in 070 and keep it, you know, it was originally 070, but keep it there because the community development department is comfortable processing applications like this that are, are complex, and, you know, they end up be, becoming a kind of an inter-office exercise, in, in any case, public works, engineering, everybody's involved.
Is, is this a case where multiple carriers put in multiple towers, they don't share? I mean, we could have any number of applications from providers in the area, all putting in their own towers?
Well, that, so when I mentioned colocation, that is kind of the, the point of some of those provisions is making sure that the different carriers, if it's possible, that they actually put their, their towers, that, that they put their antennas on the same towers. In practice, to be seen how this works, but that's, that is what we, that is, that is the intent, and that, the master license agreement would be another way to kind of ensure that that there's not a tower every 50 feet.
Do we have any, do we have any clue with this technology and with the transmission in a town like Glenwood, should we get 5G, which eventually is, is, how many towers we talking about? Do we have any, do we have any concept? With our weird geography anyway, we talking dozens, hundreds, do we know?
I don't know. We have a provision in there requiring them to share their likely deployments in the next 18 or 24 months, and it, I, we haven't heard it here yet, but in other towns I've heard them say, oh, that's confidential, we're not gonna tell you. Or, you know, for publicly traded companies, they say we're, we're not allowed to tell you.
But based, based on, based on what you're saying, in new FCC and federal regulations, there's not, there's not much leeway. You've put in about as much leeway as we can manage at this point, based on legal opinion?
Yeah, that's, that's what we're trying to do, and, yeah, at some point. The, the federal law may change again. There's a new FCC chair, and in that case, we'll be back here trying to exercise more discretion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? So I have to, I, I guess I'm ignorant to this. Currently, we don't have this kind of situation, right, where we have downtown in the planting strip, uh, uh, G4 antenna? But we don't, right? Because they're all in the hills and they all kind of went for higher spot. Is that coming to an end where this?
That's my understanding.
It's all going lower and.
They're gonna do this stuff, and then even.
Guys, remember the Fresnel zone? Different, remember the Fresnel zone? It's gonna be a different deal, right?
Yeah, that, and you know, there's even instances where they're putting them in park benches and then mailboxes and these like little, little cells, things that have like a hundred-foot radius. So, yeah.
That's the 5G network. That's what's, that's what this means.
Yes.
It's gonna be everywhere and every corner.
But it's safe.
And then, and this is.
You're not allowed to ask.
And, and don't ask where they're gonna put it, but it's, this is it. This is the future.
Yeah, and this is why the.
No idea.
You know, the larger municipal organizations are fighting this, because the, kind of the doomsday outlook is, it's gonna take over our downtowns.
Right, well, and, and I kind of have to agree with that, but are we at, I mean, we, we, we talked about. Right. And I kind of have to agree with that, but are we at, I mean, we we talked about height. We talked about co-location, multiple and one. Are we concerned about the looks of it? Is that part of this? Or is that still standing with the older stuff that we already talked about with the they're outside of town and put pine leaves, pine pine needles, branches on it. So they is that still part of the deal? Or are we just going to have lampposts without lanterns on it? Or could this become a lantern?
That that is one of the things we can, we are hoping to require is, you know, there are, they can build towers that are replacement lampposts, for example, or replacement signals.
So that's an option.
That is one way to
And we can require that.
We need us.
And is this part of this update? Is this in here?
Yes.
The the looks and the everything, the design is is at our
Within some parameters.
Right, but it has to be technically feasible, you know? We can't say you have to use this and they say, well, that doesn't work for our network. Then we have we have to kind of close that gap.
Okay.
So that's you know, at some point, we might have to actually hire a wireless engineer to
To see what what is coming. But we do have it in here at this point where we can say, hey, make it fit.
Yes.
That's a little bit of so, you know. But, yeah, okay, anyway.
I have sort of another question. Is there any way that we can prevent one of these popping up every 50 feet? And we say if it's within so many feet of another one, you just have to co-locate.
I believe that it is. It is in here.
I think it's 600 feet from each other.
Well, yeah, they 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 can't be closer than 600 feet to each other in this. Is that in the same network? Or
I don't think it's says maybe, but there's like 10 networks.
Right.
It's every 60 feet.
It is 600 feet.
Okay.
But this is where I mentioned the height versus spacing. It's a bit of a balance. Yeah, we can make them 50 feet.
So if we have the 600 foot proximity, then that doesn't, does that count the ones that are in park benches and mailboxes? Or is that only a tall tower?
Well, we're not that. These are just the alternative tower structures.
Okay.
We're not seeing the park bench stuff.
So 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 from the legal standpoint, you feel what we have in here is going to help us as much as possible to make this sensible and okay, right. Okay.
So what are we not seeing here in this image? No, in terms of infrastructure.
There is some, there's stuff underground. And then
Maybe we could bring up one of them that is the not, this is like the preferred.
This is the prettiest one they have.
You want to show some ugly ones?
Nice option.
Yeah.
This one. Well, it's got the refrigerator up.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's visual clutter.
Yeah. This, I think this is more, this is on a power line.
Looks like an electric system. So what is feeding this? So underground, I mean, how much?
Underground, it's it's fiber and then there's
Power as well.
Yeah, there's power and that's another consideration with where they want to locate is you know, being connected to fiber and power. And and then within, you know, these poles, they have like this, this thing that's halfway up this tower, that is actually in the base of the pole there. That's I think we're we're fortunate that we haven't seen applications coming in until now because some of that older stuff is quite ugly and a lot of, as you said, it's visual clutter. So we're getting applications that look like this, which at least we can call them to paint in a different color.
Right.
There's a lot of disruption to bring this, these utilities to this location as well, not just visually above the ground.
Yeah, they there is stuff underground. Yeah, you know, they they have to they have to bore, I believe it's 60 feet deep of caisson for these things.
Companies have to pay for their own electricity?
Oh, yeah. You know. And then, you know, anything along along the highway, that's C dot as well, for the most part. And so
We have no control of grand app.
So one of you want to, you know, I don't want to talk about any applications, but we are, we are working with C on this.
I think we're doing it's worse.
Of course. All right. Excellent. Thank you. Any any additional questions to staff at this point? No, we see none. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Richard. Anybody from the public like to come forward? Comment on the 5G regulations, I guess, updates, updated regulations? No, we'll see. Spend your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is John Zelinski. I live at 907 Metal Run. In the app, I just came for something else. As I'm sitting here, I'm sitting here thinking, going, the feds are trolling our local government is what I'm hearing. But we can smoke, we can sell pot. But yet it's still illegal federally. As law goes, I would think that her state governs our state and it supersedes sometimes the federal law because that way.
I'm not going to get too deep into the distinction between marijuana and small cell, but the the use of the right of way is actually more of a state law requirement. And that's, you know, that's something that has been around for a long time, where like telephone companies can come in and dig up our streets. It's kind of a pain of athletic horse life. But, you know, we can also require them to repay them when they do that. So but in general, yes, this is preempted by federal and state law and mechanically how that would work is we if we deny based on something, a wireless company determine that thinks is a federal standard that preempts our code, then they would sue the the city and claim preemption. Distinguished for marijuana, there's nobody out there that's going to that even had standing to to challenge state and local codes on in the same manner. You know, it's it's a regulatory issue and and, you know, generally on marijuana, like what else? And that is the government, this is the federal government exercising enforcement discretion. And not going after local governments, but I'll leave it at that.
All right. Thank you very much. We always learn something. Anybody else in the public? I will see none. We'll close the public portion. I'll bring back the commission and it looks like we have one action item in, let's see, there's no, is there no number? No, no planning on it, but it is the consideration of a text amendment to O seven O, O three O, O three O G, U specific standard for wireless communication facilities. Staff is recommending approval with findings.
Page two.
Page two. And if any emotion, I guess.
Make a motion to approve the text changes on or number Oh, yeah. Consideration of the text amendments to zero seven zero zero three zero zero three zero G, along with findings on page two.
Excellent. We have a motion from Commissioner West to approve.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Shakt. Any more discussion on the 5G? And we'll start with Commissioner West.
I'm good.
Okay, excellent. Commissioner Shaver.
You know, I got a lot of extra sleep since that got sent to us, just trying to read this. But I did notice under item Q. It just seems like a long rambling sentence with a period at the end. Didn't seem to say, I think what it was wanting to say. Maybe are further restricted to that area in proximity of destruction? Might make it make sense, but trouble with that. Says on Q site for towers other than towers. Page.
Sorry, we didn't, but
Page four, page four.
Oh, four, yeah.
I see.
Four twenty-two.
Is this a definition?
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'm a further restricted.
What? That's first site. I believe this is a federal, the definition in federal law.
Oh, that explains.
We just don't. Yeah. We don't want to mess with that.
Okay.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Anybody else? More discussion on this? No, we'll see none. I'll call for the question to approve what we're talking about. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? See none. Thank you. We'll move the wireless out of the way and yes, now we're getting into the consideration of a code text amendment, even this will code O seven, including but not exclusive section seven O, O two O zoning districts, O seven O, O three O use regulations and O seven O, O four O development standards. And I think that was, and again.
Yep, just going to stay at the podium all night.
Help me out quick. The 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 last one on item five five B, is that part of this?
So this was all a continuation of what we noticed as changes to title O seventy O. The planning item is technically fifty-seven dash twenty-one, but since you guys have already approved some code changes under that planning item, I haven't pulled it through, so it's not confusing. So did that clarify or just?
My my point is I only have one more report.
Yeah, this is the last item.
Oh, okay.
No more reports for you.
That's it for this year. We're done. Okay, just tell us about it. Thanks.
Also, since I failed to mention before, my beautiful festive sweater, so that everyone knows for next year, it will be the Planning and Zoning Commission ugly sweater meeting. The last one that we have in December, so I'm giving you all plenty of notice. Some of you are like, I won't be here.
I'll be laughing at you.
Yeah, anyways, Hannah Costin, Community Development, I always forget to introduce myself. So this next item under title seventy code changes is in reference to the non-residential design standards that Planning and Zoning Commission has had a work session on and also was at the last meeting as well to discuss. And since that time, staff has sent out public notice to all of the property owners within 300 feet of a proposed overlay district, which I'll pull up a map here in just a second and describe the components of that district. And staff did that so that the community had a chance to really look at these standards that you're considering tonight and possibly come in and comment on them so that you get a bigger picture. We also did interface with the chamber to make sure if they got any questions through their channels that that was forwarded to us as well. And at the time of staff report, we did not have any public comments that were received. We did see some mild chatter out on social media, but nothing that was an actual concern, so I don't have anything to report in that aspect as far as the public comment goes, but wanted you to know that we did send that out, a very large mailing to mostly downtown sites, downtown parcels, excuse me. So this part of title seventy changes is actually considering changes to non-residential design standards and proposing what we're calling a business district overlay zone. So I provided a summary of how you guys have gotten to this point and staff has taken Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations in getting here. So on our non-residential and mixed-use site and building design, so this is section seventy forty ninety, we have some minor changes that you guys also viewed last time. I'm just going to list them here. These are mostly on the design side, so adding that required projections for every 25 feet of building shall include a column and lintel feature. Also adding a detail that belt courses use to articulate distinction between floor levels. We added a minimum depth of that of four inches. And then also a detail for kick plates that they shall measure between 18 and 24 inches. So those are the amendments that is included as an attachment to your staff report, text updates for seventy forty ninety. So the next larger piece is the business district overlay zone. I'm going to pull up a map so that everyone can be looking at it at the same time. So this is updated from the last map that you guys saw. This is the with the direction of Planning and Zoning Commission. Hopefully you guys can see it better on your computers. It's a little light here. But the hatched area that includes properties around Sixth Street between Pine and Laurel and then coming south of the Colorado River into the what's more commonly known as downtown between Seventh and Tenth with portions, so mainly properties along Grand Avenue with portions also including Cooper over to Blake. So this is the overlay district map as it's proposed. The components of this district and what has changed since the last time, we pulled in the parking amendments into the overlay district. And the parking amendment is that 100% of off-street surface parking be required to occur behind the rear wall of the primary building. So that would apply to all properties, residential or non-residential, within the overlay district. That is one of the first changes. So the other two components have to do with the ground floor uses that are going to be occurring in this zone. So I'll just read these. When a non-residential building is proposed on a vacant lot or when a non-residential building is occurring within the downtown core is demolished, the first floor of the new building shall be uses that generate sales and or lodging revenues for the city. So that is, these are the major components of this overlay district and all of that would only apply to the map that you see here. So we did compare this to what we have existing code. You guys had some questions last time, like how does this apply to what is already there for residential parking or non-residential parking? So I included that in the staff report. We do have standards on both of those guides that already address a little bit of this. Are we good?
You didn't mention, you didn't say 50%.
Oh, did I not? Fifty. How did I miss that in reading it?
Sorry.
That's a good clarification, Commissioner Shaktor. So it is when a residential, non-residential building is proposed on a vacant lot, basically a new building is proposed on a lot, whether the previous building was demolished or it's vacant, 50% of the gross floor area of the first floor shall be uses that generate sales and or lodging. Half of the new first floor has to be those uses. So that that's kind of like the, on the use side, that's the gist of what we're proposing. And then I did a comparison of our code on the park And then I did a comparison in of our code on the parking side to show you. Um, the standards that we already have that do address parking, this would be, uh, an increase of what we already have. Uh, both the residential and the non-residential standards have components where you're trying to limit. Um, basically being able to view a parking lot from the right of way. Um, so there's, you know, in, on the residential side. Surface parking lots shall be internalized in building groupings and located away from street frontages. And no off-street parking within the front yard setback, and then there's some additional standards for the downtown core. And on the non-residential side, you know, only thirty percent of total number of off-street parking spaces. Can be between the principal building and the front property line, so we already have some standards that get at this component. Um, but with this overlay district, we're basically maxing it out so that all of your parking has to be behind a rear wall. So the increase of those standards in the specific area. Um, and then I also did note, because it's important, um, part of this overlay district is occurring within the GID, the general improvement district. Which does not require any parking. For any development that comes in, you can provide parking, you are not required to do so. So this parking standard in the overlay district would only apply if a development was choosing to provide parking. Obviously. Uh, just wanted to make those distinctions. Um, I provided in the staff report several maps that show you how this boundary interfaces with some of our other, uh, downtown boundaries. And then, um, criteria. That I mentioned in the previous code amendment, um, staff does find that this is consistent with comprehensive plan and city policies. Does not conflict with other provisions of this code. Is necessary to address a demonstrated community need. And to respond to substantial changes and conditions. Um, and is consistent with the general purpose and intent of this code. Uh, those, that criteria analysis is on page five and six of your staff report. Uh, so staff recommendation, you have, um, one action item on this, um, particular code change. Staff is recommending approval of the amendments. Um, with some suggested findings that you can find on page six of the staff report. And with that, I will open it up to questions and clarification.
Thank you, Hannah. Uh, back to us for, uh, questions, we'll start with, uh, nope, I heard click. Any questions? Can we please, looking and reading and doing so, I'll start. Um, and, and, and I have to be honest, I missed the October work session, Anthony, but. I read the minutes and I listened to, I listened to familiarize myself with the material, but. Um, I'm, I'm a little. Not concerned. Why is it such a small, uh? Commercial overlay district?
Um, so if you watched the previous meeting, um, staff had started off with basically a suggestion. And, uh, I believe actually your commissioners expanded what we were talking about.
Yeah.
Um, so we added the section to the north, which wasn't there, and we expanded a section on the south to include aspects of Cooper. But to your point of why it is only in these areas, these really were the street frontages that Planning and Zoning Commission was focusing on. In our work session when we were talking about.
The network.
Right.
Formula retail standards.
Right.
And you really, like, there was a focus on the Grand Avenue and that pedestrian oriented commercial district. And so staff presented this, um, for this particular area. Also with considerations and looking at uses on other blocks of how that may impact future plans, um, also. You know, this has impacts for parking lot areas if they redevelop or if a parking structure. Um, were to go up within this overlay district with these particular. Standards, it's going to have impacts for that, so there was some consideration, um, for city parking lots that exist as well. Uh, there's one on Colorado, so we had a chat about that. And what that would look like if it was. Meant to meet these standards, but mainly, um, I think the idea behind this is these are the two central. What's considered to be incredibly pedestrian oriented, um, with the desire, at least by, uh, the commission in previous work sessions, to have that. Be a vibrant, uh, commercial area.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I should wait till discussion because I, yeah, I want to say something else, so thanks for the clarification. Uh, I must have missed that in my material, but at least it's on the record, very good. Uh, anybody have any questions? No, we'll see none. Thank you, Hannah. Anybody from the public like to come forward?
I have a question.
Oh.
So the, the way I read it is that.
Sorry, Commissioner West, please.
If a vacant building or vacant lot is developed into a building. The vacant lot is developed fifty percent of the gross floor area on the first floor, needs to generate sales tax. Or lodging, but if something is demolished. And replaced, do we have that same fifty percent or are we saying? The entire first floor?
So we have a proposal for a vacant lot, we also have when a non-residential building is demolished. The first floor of the new building.
So it just says the first floor of the new building shall be uses that generates.
Oh, and it's missing the fifty percent typo. Yeah, so both of these standards, the, the first floor component of this. Either for vacant lot or when a building is demolished for non-residential uses, it's always going to be the fifty percent.
Right.
Of ground floor space dedicated to this.
Good catch. Okay, anybody else? No, thank you. Anybody from the public like to come forward? You state your name and address for the record.
John Zilinski, I live at nine oh seven Meadow Run in Gladwood.
Thank you.
I also own a building in this. I own two buildings. In this, uh, overlay district and, um. You know, it just seems. As I am looking this over. There's a few banks that have. Parking on the side of their banks and. Would that be in violation if they were to do it after this gets approved? Yeah, so A and B and Bank of Colorado have that parking lot on the side of them. And I don't see the banks moving much, uh, after they just rebuilt. And as I'm reading this, uh, the description. I just had a fellow review of a building on the other side, I think it's like. Eighteen, eight eighteen. And he read in the whole first floor, um, I'm not sure if it generates any. Tax earnings for the city. But. In the, in the process of even that person trying to sell that building, maybe they wanted to put a second story where that would have been, uh. Maybe short-term rentals or something like that. Where the, the income wasn't, where the city wasn't coming from the first floor, it was coming from the second. And. That's not taking it into consideration. In the verbiage, what, the way this is written. I do agree, there should be tax earning. Businesses, uh, that's what I provide to the city, um, in a district, that would be great. Um, I know two rivers is coming up the pipe. Um, and if it would extend up seventh, um, as an overlay district. That might be something to consider. But as, as far as P and Z goes. I think you want to take a broader picture of if something were to get. I, this is also, I think, an opportunity zone. Where, uh, you could have somebody making investments in, in a building. That is kind of maybe run down a little bit and put a second story, I think there's. Height restrictions off of Grand Avenue that provide a taller than average. Build where the second story can generate income and, uh. I think it just pigeonholes some of the design thoughts when you think the first floor has to be, uh. The generator of tax earnings. You know. Maybe there's some other scheme out there where they're thinking of. Lodging upstairs and something else downstairs that's maybe more professional that doesn't, I don't know. I mean, we have so many realtors and banks that don't. Lawyers offices and things like that. Don't make money for the city, uh, so. I mean, I, I'm all for having a business district, I, I think having more, you know, concentrated area. Uh, is great for someone to park their car and just have an awesome experience in Gladwood. But I think the way it's written feels a little con- constricted on. Somebody that might buy the property and have a big concept of their other stories, um, rather than the first story being the. Tax generator, I don't know. And I would also suggest to you guys thinking about seventh corridor, because, uh. That's going to be. But I don't know what, what do we call it now? We don't call it conference.
Eighth Street Cross.
Yeah. What is?
Eighth Street Cross, yeah, there you go.
Eighth Street Crossing, um. Well, that, that whole quarter, which is why we put, I say we, I'm on DDA. The bathroom is located for downtown. To the. West of Grand Avenue, thinking that would be the walking corridor for more potential growth and, uh. I think if you're trying to make a core where people would walk and be back and forth, uh, going over the bridge would be one of them and then extending down seventh. Be one of them, but I, I would have. Would just say. Somebody else might have an idea that. First floor isn't really the generator, I do like people that. Spend money and buy and up, update our downtown for sure. But there might be some other ideas out there that this would be restricted. That's, that's the only reason.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anybody else from the public like to come forward? See none, we'll close the public portion and, uh, since Hannah's already up, would you think you'd like to say?
Um, uh, first of all, thank you, Mr. Zilinski, for your comments. Um, I think I would like to provide one clarification point as far as the, what is written and, and you guys are. Uh, a driving force behind this, but the intent of the overlay district is really not. From the city's perspective to generate money for the city. Uh, we're using that as a mechanism to create a vibrant interaction between the public, so. With sales and lodging tax being created, what we see with those uses are, they're, they're more interactive with people on the street. So yes, it, it, we have identified sales and lodging tax that will go to the city, but the financial piece of it is not the driving factor here. It really is trying, from, from what you guys have told staff, trying to create that vibrancy between. You know, this pedestrian oriented area that we have and, um, and, you know, stores that pedestrians will go into. Um, and other uses that are a little bit more interactive as opposed to, uh, some of the uses that Mr. Zilinski mentioned, uh, rightfully so. Uh, real estate offices, lawyers offices and things of that, that don't have a, a whole lot of that vibrant interaction. So just a clarification on intent, it is not the city's intent to get more money out of this. It is really more of a, a feel of the downtown of, of why this is coming before you.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Bring it back to us, so let's see, Commissioner Schacter, any questions?
No.
Till we have a motion, okay, excellent. I guess if there's nothing else, no other clarifications, questions to staff, no, okay. Then I will entertain a motion in, uh, I guess this is still planning item fifty seven twenty one.
It is, yes.
It is continued item five B, which is an amendment to the. Oh boy, oh seven oh four oh nine, no non-residential design standards and business overlay district. And I'll entertain a motion to, let's see, what's anything you want to do? I'm entertaining a motion. Staff is, staff is recommending approval, let me just throw that up.
Chairman regarding, uh, planning item fifty seven twenty one, even with the code text amendments that you have previously referenced. I would, uh. Recommend, I would move to, um, recommend approval with the findings on page six of the current staff report.
Awesome, uh, uh, motion approved, uh, made by Commissioner Schacter.
I would second.
And seconded by Commissioner Zip. Uh, any discussion? Please use your votes. Start with Commissioner Schacter.
Well, I would, I would say, and it might help Mr. Zilinski and others understand, a lot of this was precipitated by the, um. By this commission feeling so handcuffed by the A and B part. And also being aware that we felt and we felt the community supported it, that the downtown character. Needs to be less professional and more retail oriented, um, for our visitors and that was the precipitating, but man, how do we do that? Some of us may not even felt fifty percent was, uh, this was a series of developments that, um, allowed it to valve and as Hannah mentioned, uh. And Marco, you weren't here, originally the district was, um, just, um, south of the river and didn't include Cooper. Um, we, we did, and we expanded that and also looking ahead to Sixth Street, um, where there's likely to be a lot of redevelopment to extend that character. And, um, I think Seventh Street for now, we omitted because there's so much unknown about A Street Crossing at this point. It would have been maybe premature, um, there may be some disagreement about that. And the only other thing I'd say, um, and, and maybe Hannah can, if I'm wrong, is if. If there were a stupendous retail redevelopment project. There's always the thing we hate the most is a variance that could apply in this, in the case where somebody had a project so irresistible. That they weren't going to do fifty percent, or can you not do a variance in that kind of code?
No. For a use.
Interesting question, um, where it would fall in. I think it would definitely, if it were to be available, as Richard's thinking, it would fall in the variance category, which as you guys are very familiar, meeting all.
All the criteria.
Seven of those criteria is challenging, yes.
Yeah, I think the relief that someone would look for would be like D U D rezoning probably. If, if it was some amazing integrated mixed use development.
I think we felt, I think that at least I and the commission, most of us felt that this was accomplishing most of what we wanted for future character of downtown development.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Summer, Commissioner Shaver.
You know, uh. Having looked at this map that shows all the different, uh, district boundaries and. So forth, you know, one of the things we tried to achieve during the, uh. Code rewrite was to make things simpler, cleaner. Give more discretion to the director to, um, improve the. The workings of, of development. And I don't, to me, looking at these maps where we've got four different. Boundaries is kind of getting away from. From that. And given that the GID is, is its own. Zoning district, as I understand it. It would seem to me to make better sense. To consider expanding this boundary to the same boundaries of the GID. Which doesn't help us on, um, Sixth Street area. But, um, maybe that can be addressed in another way. The other thing I think it would do is, you know, we're kind of, we've, we've kind of, we're kind of being reactionary, as Summer has mentioned, to the A and B bank situation. And I think. Limiting the boundaries to this side is not looking far enough down the road. To what future development could happen. Within. The general improvement district. So I think I would like to consider the, expanding the boundaries of this. So I think I would like to consider the, expanding the boundaries of this.
Okay, thank you. George, Commissioner Saber, please.
Yeah, I would echo what Commissioner Shacter said about. Trying to preserve the downtown walkability. If you, if you go on foot up Grand Avenue, even when you're at the bus stop, there's this big Comcast building with no windows and no doors. You really don't feel like you need to walk anywhere, though. You just turn around. So what we were trying to do with these limited tools in our toolbox is to make sure that that. That pedestrian flow can, can go clear up to the edges of the shopping areas and not be cut off by. A development which doesn't present any opportunities for, for visitors or locals who like to go in. And even like a doctor's office on the main level, you know, if that's not your doctor. You got no reason to carry on up there. So we were definitely trying to address the character of our, of our streets that way. I. We did that back and forth, how, how far this district should extend. A lot, if you go much past where the drawing is outlined now. We're going to be catching a lot of residential uses, which of course have integral parking. If we tried to take away parking. Make all the parking go behind the buildings in a lot of these residential districts, we would probably have a lot more people in this room. Protesting that, that move. So I feel like we've got a compromise. And one of the things that we talked about when we looked at this last time. Was that this is sort of a start and we can expand on this district as, as we see development in certain areas. I do feel like it's a little small, but I think. I think we've come up with a good place to begin, knowing that it can be modified and advanced in the future. Pretty supportive of how, how far we've come with this discussion.
Thank you. Back to Commissioner Shacter.
Well, I, I, I like what both our commissioners have said for the same reason I would be wondering. George and maybe staff. So. If we expanded the G I D, we're, we're encompassing a lot more residential, but residential is not. Affected by this code change until redevelopment occurs. So.
One thing on that, so the, the ground floor. You're correct, that, that aspect is not imposed because it's strict, it. As written now, it says non, a non-residential building, when a non-residential building is proposed, or when a non-residential building is demolished, the new building. But the parking is equal. So as written now, the parking will apply to any property that develops.
Residential or not?
Yes.
So I would wonder about that implication and then. I guess it's, it would be sad because we do need. A lot of residential and right now I don't, I don't think our. There's a ton of pressure to expand our retail at this particular environment right now, but should it ever happen? Then as those residential, if those residential, rather than. Rather than A Street Crossing, if the expansion of retail ended up going east from our downtown on Cooper, Colorado, then you'd have redevelopment standards, I guess. Would apply to, if a residence is knocked down and becomes non-residential, then these. Would apply. Is that correct? If, if they were in that zone. So I guess I don't know the answers. I have more questions. What would happen with the existing parking or somebody's redoing residential or? Somebody's redoing multi, I don't know. I, I like the idea that we've got a start, albeit it may be confusing for a while. I don't know.
Thank you. Commissioner Saber.
So what, talking to staff, you know, just. Terms of changing the wording to where. The parking is applied to non-residential only. So as long as it. Is redeveloped as a residence. Then. Situation, parking situation as it is now, it's not required. Then we could. Address that situation that way.
Certainly could add that language to the parking aspect itself to apply only to non-residential development.
I'm just thinking that since this is in the, the G I D. Nothing says that they can't develop to. A non-residential use at this point, right? That's allowed in the zoning district. So. Seems to me that's more forward thinking in, in terms of. Addressing the future rather than reacting to the recent past.
Staff, think of any, I like what George is saying, excuse me, but are there any unintended consequences we're missing here? If it were to expand it and the, and the parking would just apply to non-residential or? Is there something we're missing here that? Would throw a wrench in the works?
Can I, can I say a couple of things before?
You're the chairman.
Sure, I'm thinking.
That's what I, that's what I kind of, that's what I got from you. So. Just a cou- a couple of ideas here and unfortunately I wasn't here to say them earlier, but. First of all. Just real quick to the fifty percent, I, I think that's not enough. I think that should go at least to seventy five. Meaning you could have small offices, but yet a larger retail space, yet a larger. Food establishment, whatever. I think it would make more sense to require more vibrancy. Office to me is not vibrant. That's one thing and that was just a quick little deal to the fifty percent. The, the boundary, since we are. Amending the. Design standards. I would recommend. Or suggest, I don't know which one is easier here, but I would think we should go to the design standard boundary. And reason said, I may be looking at this. Way removed. I may be way up high looking at the bigger picture here. Because my concern is, and Commissioner Zipperly, you said, we can always extend this district. Yes, we can. But at that point, Commissioner Saber, we're reactionary again. It's too late. If we get an application for, let's say, Cooper, Colorado, oh, I want to build this and we're like. Well, our district doesn't go there. So now what? Because at some point. I hope. That Glenwood will expand east and west into a walking. Vibrant downtown with not just food establishment and great retail on brand. But also in Cooper, also in Colorado. So I'm thinking we should look ahead a little bit, more than just ten, twelve years and think, let's go green. We can add standards to take care of residential redevelopment with parking requirements. We can add standards for parking structures that could be exempt of certain things. I feel we're not quite there. With where we could be to promote hopefully more vibrancy a few blocks out than just Grand Avenue. Jen.
I, I think. If that is the direction that you're going, I think you may want to have a conversation about how it impacts parking garages. Because if you go all the way to encompass all of the eight street. Crossing components or so, then you're requiring. Fifty percent or seventy five percent of the ground floor to be. Lodging or retail, but in order for it to be a parking garage, you're going to need a ramp. You're going to need a way to get up to the second, you're going to park up or you're going to park down. So I would. I would just encourage you to have a conversation about what that looks like with parking garages if you are going to expand it beyond that whole area.
One hundred percent. And, and that said, if we do add Eighth Street Crossing to this, which hopefully will become an extension. Of our Seventh and Eighth Street walkability and parking garages are. Subject to be built at some point, why can't we exempt parking garages from these design standards and make them? A special review, even this is silly, special use. You want to build a parking garage, we look at the application of the parking garage, or if the city does it. Parking garage? Well, no, of course not. Of course you don't have to put seventy five. Percent of retail in because you're exempt from this because you're a parking garage. You're actually supplying downtown. With walkability, if you will, because we have people parked there and then people can circulate from the garage zone out. And walk all our streets, which in twenty years, I'm hoping. Are everywhere, Colorado, Cooper, all these things. This is all visionary stuff.
So would envision the parking lot application to be a special use within that zone that gives regulatory control.
I'm not sure special use is, is the vehicle here. I'm not sure that's the idea here. All I'm saying is, is. Yes, a parking garage is a non-residential redevelopment, absolutely. But a parking garage is not a storefront.
Right.
A parking garage is strictly, hey, why don't you park here and walk for the next few blocks and enjoy all our shops and enjoy all our restaurants? That's what a park, it's, it's a utility. So maybe we can. I have a feeling we might have to add a few standards to this before we can say. Don't get me wrong, this is great, it's, it's awesome, but I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure. It encompasses enough. Where I feel comfortable that we don't get another A and B bank in Colorado or Cooper at some point. And that, and as soon as the application's in, we're too late. And that's what bothers me.
That's also why we felt it was imperative. To include north of the river and not delay very long.
Hence my, my green boundary. If we're, if we're amending the design standard, then let's go with the design standard boundary. That's just. I just think we should think a tad bit further ahead than just, oh, we can extend it. Well. Too late.
We missed it. A special use everywhere.
So I was just pulling up our land use table. Cause as you're talking, I'm thinking we do have parking as a principal use, which Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, that would include a parking structure. Yeah. So parking as a principal use is identified. As a special use review in, in all the zones that it is allowed. It's not, you can see these blank spaces indicate it's not allowed in our.
For that. There's a separate use table for parking garages.
Sorry, but it is a special use review all of them.
Which zone isn't?
If you keep going down.
Down, okay. Is it accessory? It looks like it's got the same.
It's the same.
Except for that last, some district, which is when we're getting into industrial, I believe. So there is something already in code, the parking structures have a special use. So in theory and thinking about what you're talking about, code language wise, you could put in something. Exempting parking structures which shall meet and then reference. The special use permit.
Special use table, so.
I'm looking at Jen, she's thinking.
Okay, I'm not saying we have to, we have, I'm, I'm not saying we have to finish this right now. I know there's a motion of approval on the table, but I'm not saying. We have to finish this. In my opinion, there's time here to make sure we do the right thing. There's. Time here, and I hate to, okay, the bank, let's keep the name out, that, that, the bank doesn't happen again. And to me. Fortunately, I closed the public portion. So. So I think we should maybe think about this just a tad bit longer. And, and while we're talking about specialties and stuff, maybe we should revisit certain uses. For someone's area.
Mister Chairman, but what, can we ask that, if, if this were passed tonight. At the expanded zone that our chairman's talking about. How would, under our existing code, how would parking structure apply as a special use? Is it, if, if we did not address. Would it become an allowed special use in this zone, subject to special use review? How, how would it fit in without additional wording?
So as it's, as it is now, let's say a parking str- let's say we have this overlay district. A parking structure is proposed within the overlay district.
Right.
As it's written, a hundred percent of that off-street parking structure. Is going to have to occur behind the rear wall of a primary building. Which if it's a parking structure, it doesn't technically exist.
Right. We need to extend that.
And, and further, further, if you're getting in, you want to, you know, think about this fully, if it's a vacant lot. And you know, this is when it gets all crazy. Cause is a parking structure a non-residential building?
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Yeah. So if we exempted.
Like how we define that. Then you get, you're getting into money waters.
So if we exempted it, or we could add language, we, we could add. Right? We could add standards, we could add exemptions, we can add references to special use.
What happens with a special use? If we exempted it totally. And it then was, then it would apply as a special use in this home? And what are our leeways in the special use application?
Yes or no?
It's still going to apply as a special use regardless. It's just with this, in your special use review, we're going to bring up the fact that one of the criteria is. This hundred percent behind.
Unless we exempt it.
Yes. Yeah. So it'll still, if you exempt it, it will still come to you as a parking structure, special use permit application.
But exempt from the standards.
Yes, it will just be the standards that exist now.
But it needs to be pretty still. No, no, there's.
Needs to be what?
Pretty. We're still, we still want the.
We have that leeway and a special use as a commission.
You have, you have greater flexibility in a special use permit review for aesthetic components. Yes.
Yes.
That exists today if a parking structure came in anywhere in the city.
So.
So there's no standards, no established standards, right, for the parking garage.
But you can go with the design standards.
Or like the one, the, the one that was put in on. Ninth and.
That's pretty.
Yeah, but as far as because we think it, it's.
Yeah, that's the.
So where I'm getting at, Chairman, is there a reason, if, if the, if the council. If the, if this council, if this commission was willing to expand the district even further than Commissioner Saber. To the design, the green, to the green, and the exempted structures would be accomplish what we want. At this point.
And we offered the seventy five percent and I'm good to go.
Well, that might be an internal debate.
That could be the debate.
Language about, you know, non-residential, residential.
Yes.
Parking.
Yes.
Right. Delineation, separation.
Well, if we did have a large, you know, like a fourplex going on a large lot out there on Blake. And we exempt residential, they could have a big parking lot right out in Lake and have condos behind, right?
Pardon my intrusion. I think Jen would like to. Give us some wisdom.
Hang on just a second. Did you say they could? To hurt them? Did you say, did you answer?
Fourplex going in.
On Blake?
On Blake.
Parking lot in front because it's residential, is that possible?
Only thirty percent, right? Or something like that?
Under our current standards?
Can't be a hundred percent.
Yeah, so it can't be a hundred percent. There's restrictions in place already and also furthering in the downtown core. Which I'm happy to bring that up again. So. Residential surface parking configuration. No off-street parking within the front yard setback. So depending on the zone district, that could be twenty. Fifteen, whatever it is.
Okay.
You can't have parking there except for a driveway. That is fine. For multi-building developments, surface parking lots shall be internalized in building groupings and located away from street frontages. So this is more. Multi-family, you know, units. And then standards in the additional downtown core, again, this is for residential. We have some established parallel or diagonal parking needs to be maintained. Off-street parking areas that do not. Order.
Yeah.
Order. Um, there is that in the downtown core for residential uses, off-street parking areas that do not connect to an alley are prohibited within residential neighborhoods. So that's also getting at. You know, towards the back.
Right.
You got to connect that to an alley, which usually indicates that it's occurring behind your.
There's something not always now.
But this is residential neighborhoods, neighborhoods within the downtown core and the downtown core is our alley district, if you look at the map.
Yeah. Okay, sorry. Hang on, Jen wanted to say something a long time. Sorry.
Just that a, a building. Is defined as a structure that protects. Property, people, property. So I would think that a parking structure would be built.
Would be built. So it would qualify as a non-residential building. So currently, if you're proposing a parking structure in this overlay district. You've got to provide fifty or whatever percentage is this.
Unless we exempt.
As sales or lodging tax generating.
Unless we exempt the parking. Anyway, I, I just think we need to look a little further. Opportunity zone. People spending money, you don't know what's coming next week. If something happens, we're behind the eight ball again and I, I refuse to go there.
You see the map again?
Which one?
The green.
The green. Three zones, four zones.
I just like to remind everybody how upset we were. With the bank. Not people or anything, but the actual.
Is that all in caps?
All this, all in caps. Then we have to pull the motion. What's that? If we'd like to hear what Mr. Zelinski has to say, which I'm willing to do since, uh, no problem, but.
Make a new motion.
Then would you have to withdraw?
Leave the table. Can we bring it back this meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We haven't taken action yet, it's just.
I have no problem, Mister Chairman, uh, subject to a second of. At this moment withdrawing a motion.
Thank you.
I will second my, his withdrawal.
Commissioner Shafter is withdrawing the previous motion with the motion standing and so is Commissioner Shaker. The second, so at that point, let's see, I'll open, I'll reopen the public portion, please come forward, state your name and add it together. Just because it's fun.
Who is this guy?
I don't know. And I give you three minutes.
Nine oh seven, run, everyone come on over. And that's in Glenwood Springs. Um, as I, I'm thinking here of potential opportunity zone people, um. Say the first floor is um commercial, um retail, say it's retail, but. The second story they want. Apartments. Um, and then if you have parking. In the back that might shrink the. Bit available footprint, I guess, for. For building, I just was wondering about some clarity on. If it's a mixed use and what upstairs is residential and downstairs is say, it says retail. You know, these are twenty-five by fifty, no. Yeah, twenty-five by fifty foot lots. And you can only generate so much retail out of, you know, two thousand square feet. So if you shrink that, you're like, well, I can't sell anything out of it. So uh. If you wanted to use the whole lot line where the mark and the, if it is residential on the second story. I'm thinking of these guys that. Opportunity zone money where they're like, okay, this is a. Structure I'm gonna level and then put two stories or three stories.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Closing the public portion again, back to us, we're still, um. We still haven't finalized this and more, and 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 I know with all due respect, Commissioner Shaker, I know you like to move things through. Your patience wears thin sometimes and I appreciate that. But let's maybe rethink this and let's make sure this is done correctly, in my opinion, so Commissioner Shaver, sorry.
Okay, so, you know, this is gonna probably complicate things even more, but. Can we go back to the the history of the general improvement district and how that was? Established and um can those boundaries potentially be expanded? Little background, please.
Now I really wish I thought we could. Um, the general improvement district is a special district, so it's not, it's not a zoning district, it's a, a. Property tax. And it can be expanded, but I I'm going to look for the the assistant city attorney to give me the mechanism. Because I think that they eat that, they have to petition in and there's probably here.
And it might require a Tabor election. If it's a tax district.
Yeah, because it's tax, yeah. So messing with that is.
It would be.
Big deal.
A a significant process.
The last time we did that was the expansion that is the little piece that's on pickin. Um, and. We can certainly bring you back more information. Um, it certainly was before my time here, so I don't. So I don't have that uh knowledge base just.
So those people petitioned to be included?
Correctly.
Yeah, and and then you wouldn't have to have an election, but if. If you all started and counsel wanted to.
Impose that.
Expand it without the consent of all property owners that do private having more much.
Now, the advantage, as I see it, to people living there and developing, they don't have to provide parking. Is there, is that basic? Is that the essence of the GID? Being being assessed fees, taxes and relief from parking. Is that what we're talking about?
Seeing some nodding behind me.
I mean, is there, is there anything else to it?
She's being very polite.
That's how I understand.
Um, I think, I think Jen's got a better understanding of the GID, you know, beneficial aspects than I do. But I do know from speaking with businesses that that is, is obviously with development, um, makes development a lot easier, so it is a large benefit.
And and if you're curious about this, um, the the people, all the people came forward with a petition. To petition to be removed from the residential zoning and be included in this because they're across the street from the post office. And they were claiming that all the trucks going in and out all day long really makes them a commercial zone, another residential zone. And it's really hard to actually rent these places, so that that was their grounds for petitions, and I happen to be part of. So anyway.
But if we expand the uh. General Improvement District, then we could catch a lot of proposed residential uses that then don't have parking.
Wouldn't be required.
Right, or or we stick to the standards that we have, which are not bad. We still have behind the building parking requirements. I understand parking garages and underground parking is extremely expensive, but at some point when we run out of room, it'll become the standard. Some point, I'm talking.
It's stuff, I mean, if we were to consider this, uh, like over on Laurel, we saw a proposal a few months ago and parking was definitely an issue. Parking was not required on that property. And all these new apartments.
That's correct.
Were coming in, then we have all this street parking and then we've got a big mess out there. Because we don't have parking on the residential lot.
Right, but like Legal said, at this point to. Increase the GID would be quite a feat. So that's, that's my only hesitation in saying, ooh. I love what you said earlier, let's make this simpler, why do we have four lines? We don't need four lines, let's come up with one line and stick to it.
What if?
As we grow.
What if we were to take our proposed overlay boundary and bring it out to the general improvement district orange line? Kind of compromise between the green line of downtown designs and where we're at right now at the post overlay.
The only reason I'm not going for the orange is because I love to have eight street crossing involved. And I'm sorry, include in this entire thing. Because I can foresee hotels pulling in there or whatever and saying, hey, look, yeah, we're here, oh, yeah, no, we have some parking up front, you know, and. No, let's, let's continue the the downtown feel.
It doesn't include six here.
And it doesn't include six.
Yeah, we do need to catch that.
And I think we need to catch.
And that's where I've said with, maybe that should be in the G S.
Eventual.
Well, and it could be advantageous for those property owners.
Can.
In some ways.
We can petition anything you want, but we gotta follow, you know. I know, I can open it for a third time, I'm not sure.
I'm not, I'm not going against your dream.
No, no.
I'm just saying. It's just another thought that's being raised during this whole conversation.
I would love to make the green and the shaded into the orange and be done with it. For the future, just be done with it.
Simple as they, you know, simplify.
One zone, done. Anyway, I I I'm not pushing anything, you guys, I, we've been doing this for a long time.
But I think we need to, there's some other language we need to.
We need to include.
I don't think we're ready to to enact on this.
Commissioner, Commissioner.
Throw it back to state.
Are you interested in hearing Mr. Zelinski one more time?
Again, it's still, we we, there's no motion, that's up to you, Mister Chair.
I just wanna make sure everybody's okay, all right, Hannah, thank you, I'm reopening.
Since I am on DDA, uh, which is a downtown development authority, we have our own overlay.
It's not a fifth one.
Which also has its own taxing district. Which has some broader scope um that. I would think might have similar motives. Um, to what you are trying to do with vibrancy and what. The tax collecting of that area is bringing in. Have a common. Goal or uh trajectory. I don't know if you have the DDA overlay picture. It is pretty impressive and it is its own tax district and. I just wanted to add that is another possible option. Since I'm on DDA sitting here.
And and just for the record, that is actually the main reason I let you speak three times.
Thank you.
Because you're part of the DDA, I think the input is invaluable here, so.
The DDA in this picture is, can you see the green?
You can see it on your screen.
Wait, that was just there.
Hold on, we're sharing the screen, sorry.
Sharing.
But this, this goes all the way. Up to. See that? The devil, so that includes the. That's the DDA district.
The green.
Yes, not the pink with the slash.
That's the G I name.
Green, wow. Um, and that's the district that we, as a DDA concentrate on. And it goes all the way up to the caverns, to the pools, this um. It's all downtown on each side of the. But it is its own tax district and.
It's a little, it's a little skinny towards uh Eleventh and Grand there where the uh, the downtown design standard boundary. Fills in those those redevelopment areas, in my opinion, where we have. Older buildings that could be redeveloped.
It does, it does, it goes all the way to Eleventh.
Right, but but there's a, there's a hole there.
Oh.
Uh, from the, from uh, from Eleventh over to uh, is that the, what is that, School Street?
To the west, Mister Chairman, you're ready to paint the whole town.
No, 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 I understand, I understand what I'm.
Well, that's what we consider our downtown district.
Right.
Just so you know, for another over.
It's pretty broad, I I'd be comfortable with my green lines at this point. Thank you, thank you, uh, thank you, John. Close the public portion again and bring it back, so. I I guess what I'm, what I'm looking for is you wanna get it done. Do we all wanna get it done and send this up?
I would just say, Mister Chairman, I'm, I'm not gonna be the one to make the motion, I'm not gonna let my patients drive things. But I would be more than willing hypothetically to make a motion that included the um green zone. Um, exempting parking structures. I, I'm not sure I'd be willing to go to the seventy-five percent versus fifty. Now, whether we do it, whether the commissioner agree to do that tonight or not, I don't know, that's why I'm not gonna make the motion at this point.
How how would staff feel if we just did these changes now? Do we feel like we're covered enough with implications for parking structures with residential uh redevelopment? That are now could be part of this green line? Or would you like another afternoon to look this over?
An afternoon?
That's all you're gonna get, Hannah, what do you think I said?
Um.
I I I wanna make sure we're. We got.
I I don't see any red flags immediately with exempting parking structures. Um, except that you might get more parking structures, but they'll come into you as a special use.
Right, we don't have to approve.
Safety net right there. And and just a quick little comment to to actually what what you said, yes, you will reduce your footprint. If you have to include parking in the back, but there is towns out there that have less rooms than we have, they have shared parking structures. They go a little bit further away and they say, hey, lot A, B, C, and D, this is our structure now. And during the day, it's ours, if you have clients, whatever, you can park at night, it's free for everybody. Or whatever comes up with, whatever they do, whatever, whatever they wanted to do. But there is shared parking out there. So there's options, it it's, it's all about money, how much you wanna spend. It's always been that way, so. Anyway, sorry.
I I mean, I can't, I can't guarantee, right, obviously, um, making changes like this. Um, it would go, obviously, anything you guys do tonight, we'll go for another public hearing to city councils, the staff does have some time there. Um, I think it might not go until. Maybe even February, depending on what we've got lined up in the agendas. Yeah, we're, we're very busy on city council agendas, um, so that could. Take some time to get there, which would allow some further thought on behalf of staff. And I think, as we all know, parking structures don't just pop up like little parks, they are very expensive to build. Um, as as you can see from how many we don't have in the city. So, um, I. I I'm.
But.
Comfortable enough.
Let let me ask you this, let's say. Let's say we do make a positive decision tonight. And you look into this and you go, I need a recommendation for council, but oh my goodness, we missed this, 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 this. Could you come back and say, guys, I know we we finished this, but this is what we should add?
Or would that be in your staff report to council?
We could definitely include, we have included changes. We could take yours and staff could say like, planning and zoning commission's crazy, staff recommends something different.
Right. Don't you say that every day?
I would never. Um, so you have that capability, but I think Jen would like to weigh in as well.
I just note that we will, uh, if this is the direction that you take tonight, that we would plan to renotice it to the all of that property, so.
For council, okay.
So that all of those new people incorporated would have a chance to look at this. And if they have feelings on how it might impact their property, since they weren't included in our notice before, they come before you.
But no, no, they, they've come before council, no, no longer before us, right?
Noticing it for council.
Okay. So the the only appeal then to this, to you guys, I will make is my seventy-five percent.
So do we do a straw indication of that?
But let's think about that, but let's think, let's think about that for just a sec, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I I I'm gonna say. Fifty percent on twenty-five by a fifty-foot lot.
Is there a hundred, I think?
Okay, whatever, hundred, that's, that's, you split it in half, you still have the potential of quite a bit of square footage of non-vibrance.
Yes.
And I'd rather see a larger vibrancy aspect and a smaller professional office. I'm gonna call it professional, because we don't wanna name any, you know, industries. So I'm thinking the twenty-five seventy-five would be a better mix for some of this, especially. If we have offices, second floor apartments, third floor, think about, think about all uses in a building. It can all happen.
Maybe if we do the seventy-five, we allow some sort of exemption for ingress or egress to parking areas on the second floor below grade. Because as they were saying, if you got a twenty-five foot lot and you try and have a nine gang and an O S gang. You've taken up the whole back of your lot by trying to provide.
Unless you do like on underbuilding parking or something.
Yeah, but how do you get there?
From the alley.
But you can't excavate the alley down, you need to build a rip.
Oh, if you do underground, sorry, I missed, I missed the underground.
So I'm thinking maybe could there be an exemption for access to off-street parking?
We're gonna have to almost.
If you have a twenty-five foot lot and you're in, going to have retail, you're not gonna put it in the back.
You're not gonna do any.
You're gonna, you're gonna maximize your street exposure, make it itself, self-regime.
Or you tell them, if it's on the east side, we have a beautiful parking structure, you go park it there. And that's gonna be part of the future, I think. Until we don't need parking garages at all anymore, our cars can get us, but that's. So anyway, I think I I would not go with fifty percent because again, what's that, twenty? So anyway, I think I, I would not go with fifty percent because again, what's that, twenty, a hundred by twenty-five percent? Twenty-five thousand square feet. Twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five hundred, not counting any utilities.
Not counting any utilities, whatever. So, so you split it in half, you still got twelve, twelve fifty of, of, that's a lot of offices. Twelve hundred and fifty square feet where you, you could have a larger restaurant. And still an office in the back, little corridor and some sort of professional something. I'm just saying. Or then you gotta subtract your staircases and your elevators and all this. Whatever. I'm just, I'm just thinking, if we want vibrancy, let's get the professional people. We love them.
Get them in back or upstairs.
There you go. What we kind of wanted with the bank.
Okay.
That's all.
Somebody gonna make a motion tonight?
Could, could I respectfully make one other suggestion?
Please.
The city and the school district have been working on. A land exchange, I believe, for a while. That is. South of Eighth Street and I think the city would like to retain some flexibility. How that property is used in the future.
Do we name it specifically?
I think it would just, it would, you just say. That the, the boundary would go west on Eighth Street and then south down.
So, so you, you would, you would exclude the elementary school and feel behind it.
At this point. Is that still that exchange with the?
Well. What if the city later on decides, hey, let's get a boat, let's sell this parcel because we need the money?
You don't own it yet. Is that the problem?
The city and the school district have been working on the six F exchange since twenty fifteen.
Long time.
And we are entering the final stretch with. CPW on that exchange. And that will free up the city and the school district to be able to swap.
How would we reference that property? Should we reference it?
Hey.
Let's see, council.
There you go. Seriously, there you go. Because we said, I personally think it should be included. What if it changes hands? What if the city sells it? What if somebody comes in and says, I make you a killer offer, I'm building what I'm building, then we have to stand. I would, with all due respect back, I would not.
So you could do a special extension at the next year.
There's still a variance.
Okay, so keep going.
I guess my question is with non-residential, if there is a park right for Eighth Street Crossing, is a non-residential use? So does there need to be tax generating base? Like if, if there's a park and there's not a building.
There's special.
Then do we not have, do we?
It's not a building.
Not a building, so it's.
Where does the park fall in?
Um, is the park considered vacant?
It's just dedicated, dedicated open space.
Dedicated open space?
Yeah. I don't know if that's a use.
A park is a use, a use table.
Right, so it wouldn't fall under the vacant lot and it wouldn't be a demolition.
Unless it's a demolition.
Unless somebody demolishes something.
Demolishes the park.
Or demolishes the building.
You know a building and puts a park in there, but build something around.
Well, as it's written, it's when a non-residential building is demolished. So not when a park is demolished.
So what if a residential building is demolished, some plant has come through and wants to tear down a house and.
We also have the old sewer plant buildings there. Are those there forever?
They're demolished.
Are they all demolished? Everything's demolished, so it's going to be there?
Yeah, the pump house is the only thing that's remaining, the sewer pump, right?
But yeah, so the, the lift station.
Lift station.
The lift station is very much needed for it to do its job and then.
They have more big demolish.
The, uh, the only other person, or the only other building that is in this area that you're discussing now is the former youth zone building. Uh, which is not residential and which would ultimately demolish.
Does the city own that building now? Is that part of this?
Yeah, yeah.
Someday, maybe.
Been working on.
So, Mr. Chairman, should the motion be made, given council's recommendation? Do we reference it at all or let it happen on the next round? Yes, I guess it's a question to two different people.
Well, I, I know Richard would like us to take it out, but I see it in this, in this, look at me. But.
Are you recommending do we ignore council?
No, we're gonna let higher powers make the decision because in, in my opinion. I think it's important that we include it just in case something else happens. Again, I don't want to ever be behind it again, behind the end ball again like we were. That's all, that's. Are you, are you sure?
I mean, we'll.
I think we'll.
It'll come back up.
You can make whatever recommendations.
Absolutely.
Right, right, absolutely. And then, and then you're gonna say the opposite at the council meeting, but at least I made a point, or we made a point, that.
Be proactive.
That's my.
That's your progress. We've been ignoring before.
Yes, yeah, once or twice, that's absolutely.
I will attempt to make a motion.
Thank you.
Uh, I move to approve text amendments to municipal code title oh seven oh sections. Including but not exclusive of sections oh seven oh point oh three oh. Oh seven oh point oh four oh, oh seven oh point oh six oh, oh seven oh point oh seven oh. And I think even point nine oh was referenced here. With the findings or conditions, whichever they are, on page six of the staff report, their findings. With the modification that the boundary be extended to the green line of downtown design standard boundary. As seen on the City of Glenwood Springs downtown boundaries map provided in the packet. As opposed to the original proposed overlay boundary. And. That we, instead of fifty percent of ground floor be required to be tax generating. We up that percentage to seventy-five percent of ground floor uses to be taxed. A or lodging tax generating, sales tax or lodging tax generating.
Do we have to exempt the parking structures?
And will, in that same motion, exempt parking structures from. The, these restrictions.
I think we got it.
They'll get the rest of the next building.
Yeah.
Second.
Did we get it? Okay, so motion approved with changes with me, was made by Commissioner Zipperly, seconded by Commissioner Shaver. At this point, any more discussions? Okay, I got some. I just want to say thank you. Thanks for listening. Thanks for being the commissioner we are and thanks for hashing things out. Sorry I wasn't there. We could have done this quicker, but thank you for letting me say what I had to say. So that's it. With that, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye to approve.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed?
You can't vote.
And we'll see none. And we did it. We move on. Excellent. Motion carries. Thank you very much to Mr. Solinsky for his valuable input. Three times. No, he didn't move at all. Excellent. Thank you, staff. I think that was it for tonight with. Ongoing stuff continued and nothing new, so we'll move into last commissioner's comments from the, for the year. We'll start with Commissioner Zipperly.
I'm, I'm glad that we're moving this ahead as a way to preserve our Glenwood character. And this is going to be kind of a new, big topic with the steering committee, and I think just action today is a good way to pick that up.
All set. Thank you. Commissioner Shaver.
Thought from last night's meeting about. Do we have any data as to the. Efficacy of transportation? You know, when our, our zoning allows for reduction in parking and is the proximity to public transportation. And do we have any data that would support or negate that, that is effective? That there is a real relationship to, are people using public transportation? That would be indicated by proximity to. You know, easy access to transportation. And why I think it, you know, one, it's important to know because, you know, we do have that written on our code as a, as a reduction in parking requirements. But it also, I think, could guide us in our comp plan as how we think about the community and. How people are using the infrastructure.
I don't know of any that we have where we could, you know, like just immediately share it with you. Certainly Rafta and our own transportation, so the Reich Glenwood, which is. Run by Rafta would have how, how many folks are getting on and off the bus? And we could certainly look at that as it relates to new projects and if the ridership has gone up. Obviously, there are other influences on that data, so for example, COVID. And I think the, the new change to zero fare on Reich Glenwood probably has an impact on that as well. So I, I certainly think we can reach out to Linda and see if she can provide us some of that data.
I think, you know, we're talking about being walkable, that's, I'm all for that. We talked about being, you know, bike friendly, that's great. But is it real? Is it something real in our community or is it just, you know, something we're trying to achieve and not really, it's not really there?
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner. Two things. One, I. I thought this, like you, Marco, was one of the better processes in the P and Z commission meeting with staff and with council. And with commission, the more of this, the better. And there aren't always exact right answers, but I like the way this evolved and with guidance. And I know there'll be a revision on the next go around, but I thought it was a great commission process. I appreciate it. The other thing I want to point out. And credit to Marco, how I get impatient, that we are often not proactive enough. And I'm going to point to, and I mentioned to you, but I'm also mentioning Trent. The solstice townhomes out there at Cardiff Glen, the great white whale in South Glenwood. And I go, what the hell happened? Because it doesn't meet our design standards. And then sure enough, Trent said, well, you know, it's Cardiff Glen. And I went back and looked at the minutes. And those two lots were not subject even to guard Cardiff Glen design standards. They were presented to commission and council in totally different colors, conceptually. They were dark originally, and then there were recommendations to lighten them, not to bleach them. But to me, it points out, if I understand it correctly, there was still an option to impose design standards on that at the time they came. Because they were requesting permissions. And again, it's one, and, and, and we chose not to, according to the minutes. And again, it's one more reason not to let something pass if there's an opportunity. Is it built to what we saw? No, it is not. But, but we kind of, if I'm looking at the minute, if I'm looking at the minute scanner, we, everybody waived that right, basically.
I think Jen is going to speak to this. I, I did not watch the minutes and I was not the planner on this, so I'm going to defer.
I actually have stayed far away from it because I was noticed for.
So Richard?
Yeah, we're getting an anonymous comment at the commission meeting.
I, I think it's certainly an interesting comment that you brought up.
Yeah.
Um, so and I'm glad that you brought it up with Trent as well, and we can review that, but it's. I, I think it's an excellent comment. I would have to review further to actually.
No.
Speak to the project and how it came through. Um, but you're right, in other applications of our design standards, that color is, is not something that we allowed to move forward.
Good point. Thank you. Commissioner West?
I, I think it was fun to go back and forth with this thing, and I think I'm gonna like continue to scratch my head when I wake up in the night. How this will apply to every little parcel. Think about it, but I think it's great. It's, uh, I think it's great to have the forward progress and the vision for the city. That's all that's kept at the forefront, I think here.
Thank you, Commissioner West. I don't have much. I just, I sound like a broken record, but thank you, thank you, Commissioner. I wish more of you were here and then, and if I can say one thing, we may not always get an A. Sometimes we get a B plus, but, but one thing in the report card is plays well with others. And we do, we really do, and I appreciate that. And, and you guys up front that are especially, I'm talking for myself, putting up with me, highly appreciate it. Another year has passed. Thank you so much.
Chairman, one other thing, just for Richard's sake, is this clock run seven minutes fast?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, due to my changes, we missed it, but I'd be more than happy to buy. Anyway, happy holidays. It was a successful year in, in, in my, my opinion, so thank you very much. Jen?
City Council is having a special meeting on January twenty-seven. To have a conversation with boards and commissions, not, I think, unlike the conversation that happened at the community center. Before the pandemic. And so each of the boards and commissions would be asked to. Come, one representative to come to that meeting. I think the idea is that the commission, each commission would have about ten minutes.
I nominate our chairperson.
And to talk about what, you know, I think the other boards and commissions. May have more, you know, questions about what their direction is and yours, it's more, you know, dictated by how the code is and state law. But I think the, the idea of the meeting is to kind of have that conversation about what the boards and commissions are working on. And so I think if you want to have a little bit of conversation about that on the next meeting, it would be in advance of that special meeting. So we can try to set aside some time at the end, or if you have any individual thoughts for. Either the chair or the vice chair or whoever ultimately.
Let's just see how it evolves, that'd be mine.
Okay, so, uh, I just want to put that out there that that is something that you will want to prepare for. And that we maybe want to save a little bit of time for on the January meeting.
I'm sure we'll have one or two volunteers that will wanna go.
You gotta think of the list of what we're working on.
Hannah, another afternoon.
You can always appoint the people who aren't here.
I know, Nate, you walk.
Marco, I noticed that you like to say, let's see how it evolves.
Let's see what happens.
I like your A-plus meeting. Thank you so much for showing me how it can be done. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Excellent. As always, upcoming applications, if there's anything we can say or not say, I'd love to hear.
So as always, upcoming applications are a moving target. Uh, thank you to all of you who responded regarding my extra January meeting that we no longer need. Basically changed the next day, so we've had applications moving around for a variety of reasons. What we do have coming in January, we have a, the, currently, as the applicant is planning, Excel energy line. As well as a rezoning for a property and possibly residential that you called up. But that is also evolving based on their application, so that could be in January, but we do have a full currently. Um, a full agenda and also February is shaping up to be full as well from several of those pieces that shifted and then now moved to February.
Have you sent out our new calendar for the year? Did I already mark that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I have.
I can resend it again.
We need to transfer. If, if that's it for tonight, seems to be, I. If, if that's it for tonight, seems to be, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
That is a Christmas present.